Meeting to order, please. As a reminder, if you would like to speak tonight before the commission, please fill out your blue card and give it to the clerk. At this time, roll call.
Here.
Commissioner Oblea?
Here.
Commissioner Patel will be marked absent. Vice Chair Feng will be marked absent. Chair Charleston?
Here. Tonight, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Lee, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, before we start public comments tonight, I'd like to just kind of read a summary of how the rules of engagement will go for tonight. Any member of the public may address the commission on items within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on the agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered and the comments be limited to three minutes per person. At that same time, if you choose to donate your time to another speaker, you're allowed to, but each person may only get one donation. And then whoever's donating their time needs to fill out a blue slip also, and please turn it in to the clerk, letting us know who you're donating your time to. So, at this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and ought to be approved with one motion unless a commission, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action. So, at this time, can we go over the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. That's submitted.
Second.
Before we take roll call on it, has anyone from the staff requested that we pull something out?
No, sir.
Has anyone from the public requested that we pull one of the items out?
No, we have not received any requests.
Alright, so I take it with you guys putting the vote forward that we're ready to take roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Charleston?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
Okay, at this time, public hearings, we're gonna have three hearings tonight. 6-2, 6-3 are continued from the October 18 meeting. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak tonight, make sure you fill the blue card out, give it to the clerk. Following the staff reports and opening of the public hearings, we will call on anybody that's filled the blue card out where you will come forward. At that time, please address the commission in an orderly manner, and please don't engage in conduct that disrupts or disturbs the meeting. Any person who disrupts the meeting may, after a warning, be subject to ejection. At this time, when we begin the public hearing, item 6 dash, 6.1, Mr. Norris, will you present the meeting?
Yeah, I remember, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 6.1 is a conditional use permit for the onsite sale of beer and wine at a new Mexican restaurant called C. Como No in the Enclave Retail Center, and Brienne Reyes, Assistant Planner, will give that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. The project before you this evening is a conditional use permit for the onsite sale of beer and wine at a new Mexican restaurant, C. Como No, located at the marketplace at the enclave. This is an aerial view showing that C. Como No will be located in the west portion of This photo shows the vacant unit next to Juice It Up that C. Como No will occupy. This unit was previously occupied by Harvest Bread. As presented in these photos, alcohol will not be displayed but will only be stored in the back cooler and cooler under the front counter. This is an illustration showing existing offsite and onsite alcohol sales in the marketplace at the enclave and the Corona Valley Marketplace. C. Como No is shown here as a blue star. The complete conditions are provided in the packet, but the ones that I would like to highlight are that the restaurant must stop alcohol sales one hour prior to close of business. Alcohol will only be served inside the restaurant, and employees must receive proper training prior to serving alcohol. The project was routed to the sheriff's department, and they did not foresee any conflicts with the sales of alcohol at this location. Staff received one public comment in opposition for this project, and that has been provided to the commission today. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions of approval. If the commission does not wish to approve the project, here are other options for the This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions. The applicant is also here this evening to answer any questions.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Did anyone from the public fill out a blue card on this matter?
No, I have not received any.
None. Any questions for staff or the applicant at this time?
Just a quick question for the staff. The two blue dots that are currently selling alcohol, what business are those?
Oh, the two blue?
Yeah.
Yeah. That is Pizza Hut and the May Ames Salon, nail salon?
Nail salon?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Twenty-one, twenty-one and older male salon, nail salon, yes.
Yeah, that's the two in the enclave, the CVS and the nail salon. They actually have a liquor license at the nail salon.
Larry, questions for staff?
I have no questions.
The only question I have for staff at this time is, when we look at the alcohol sales between 8:00 and 11:00, are they gonna stay open till midnight then? Because we do cut alcohol sales off before they close, correct?
Their condition would require them to stop selling alcohol an hour before they close, so whatever their closing time is, you back-
So then they are gonna be open till midnight?
Yep.
Does that run concurrent to most of the restaurants, do you know, in the town? I didn't think most of them stayed open that late.
You know, we-
It's not an issue, I'm just curious.
Yeah. I can send you something after the meeting. When we went through the Walmart hearings, Walmart actually went out and surveyed every business in town to see when they stayed open late, so I can get that to you, but there's more businesses than you would think that are open late at night.
Okay. Since Commissioner Patel's not here tonight, I'm gonna ask her proverbial question. We have one commissioner that she's coming, she's late, she's stuck on the 91 freeway with the semi turned over, but she said, she always asks, what kind of training are the employees? Did we set it in motion that the employees will be trained like we have in most of the past establishments that we've allowed to sell alcohol?
Yeah, there is a condition number 11 that says that prior to allowing an individual employee to serve alcohol, the permit holder shall provide training on a lawful and responsible service of alcohol to that individual employee.
Perfect.
And that's really controlled by ABC, they have standards for that, so-
Okay.
But they are required to train the employees and have a certificate on hand that says that they have been trained.
Okay, at this time, is the applicant here? Did the applicant want to speak?
Yes, they're here.
It's your choice, you don't have to, I'm just-
No, I don't really have anything I needed to say, but we are here. They are gonna be trained to serve alcohol, yes.
Yeah, really, if you need to speak from the mic, please.
There are other businesses open up there, like Subway, open 24 hours, Pizza Hut's open late, I know Jack's Box opens for 2:00 in the morning.
Oh, yeah, no, if you want to stay open late, I'm good with that, I just, we have certain rules that we try to follow, and we just want to make sure that everybody's aware of them, so there's no hidden secrets or anything by the time somebody is getting ready to go and wondering why they can't have another beer when they just came in at 11:00, if you're open till midnight, it's nice to make sure you post that so that people don't get upset, so.
Chairperson Charleston?
Yes.
For, to answer your question, I do have the document from the original Walmart hearing, so if you'd like, I can go over some of those-
No, no, I'm good with that. I just wanted to be sure that we're treating all the businesses that asked for this, the ability to be able to do this, pretty much the same.
Yes, sir, that would be consistent.
That's my concern always.
There's nine different businesses on this list that stay open to midnight or beyond.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna close the public comments at this time. Are we ready to put this to vote? Okay. Motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Our second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Charleston?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
The next item on the calendar is Miguel's Jr., and at this time, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. This is a continued item from your last meeting, so Melinda Lim is gonna give the presentation, and she'll be focusing on the issues that the commission asked us to look into further and work on with the applicant, so with that, I'll turn it over to Melinda.
Thank you, Mr. Norris, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission-
I can't hear you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Tonight, I'll be presenting a major development review for Miguel's Jr. Restaurant within the Eastville Marketplace. This is a continued item from the October 18 planning commission meeting. Here's an exhibit showing where Miguel's Jr. is located in the retail center. Keep in mind that the project is limited to the area outlined in red. At last month's planning commission meeting, you requested more building features for the rear elevation, some outdoor seating for patrons visiting the restaurant, and a revised stacking study which included data for each day of the week, holidays, and events. In addition, you had general questions relating to the center. They were for the approved landscaping along Sumner Avenue and concerns about crosswalk This was the previous rear elevation presented before you. Commission, you wanted to see some more building articulation and less blank space. Here's what the applicant proposes for the rear elevation. Some new added architectural details are the following. The height of the stone columns have increased. The murals of and light fixtures were shifted up to provide room for the two metal canopies between the stone columns, and there are two garden trellises to cover some of the blank space between the columns. The trellises will not have plants growing on them. This perspective shows the projections of the metal canopies and stone columns. In the staff report, we provided photos of the Miguel's in redlands, and as you can see, this Miguel's will have four more building elements for the rear. Staff believes that the applicant has fulfilled commission's requests, and the architect is here as well if you have further questions on the elevation. Some outdoor seating for the restaurant patrons was a request at the last meeting. Due to maintenance of furniture and food stains on the cement, the applicant did not want to provide outdoor seating. However, they did provide a bench located at the front entrance which faces the future tire store, and this is shown in the red circle. Commission, it is up to you if this is enough. There is no outdoor seating requirement. We presented this graph at the last commission meeting to demonstrate the maximum number of cars observed from the menu order board during hours, during peak hours, and it focuses on data for Thursday and Friday's peak hours, so the commission wanted additional stacking data which had all days of the week, holidays, and events for the Norco and Corona locations. In response, the applicant provided 28 days of sales data for the Corona and Norco locations to demonstrate that Thursday and Friday afternoons and evenings are the peak periods to use for the stacking study. And as you can see in the graph, Thursday and Fridays are the busiest days of the week, and other than Tuesdays, sales are about the same for the rest of the week. Lunchtime hours have more customers in the drive-through lane than dinnertime hours, and during the lunchtime hours, orders are generally smaller for individuals compared to families at dinnertime, which makes the wait times shorter and reduces stacking in the drive-through lane. And staff agrees that the stacking analysis that they provided is correct and adequate because Thursdays and Fridays are truly the busiest days of the week. In addition to data of all days of the week, you also requested data for holidays and events where patrons might choose to go to Miguel's Jr. and overwhelm the drive-through, and we asked the applicant what they would do at other locations when this occurs, and their response was that this occurrence is rare, and if there is an unexpected rush, the patrons either go park and go inside the restaurant to order, or they go elsewhere to eat. And if they do line up, there are some operational conditions which will deal with this issue. So this is a condition for a one-year review of drive-through operations by planning commission that was proposed at the previous meeting. This is an additional recommended condition for when cars extend beyond the drive-through lane, which is to provide two reserved parking spaces for drive-through customers and direct customers to wait inside, and to wait at these two parking spaces as needed, or to have, and/or to have an employee take orders outside on a tablet at the drive-through lane. The applicant can go into further detail of how these measures are implemented at other Miguel's Jr. Restaurants, and we mentioned this, and we put this in because you asked for this condition. Evergreen Development has agreed to provide two reserved parking stalls, and it is outlined in red. A representative from Evergreen is here to confirm this. In addition, staff recommends removing the condition requiring relocation of the ordering menu board that was presented at the last commission meeting because we have the other operational conditions that I mentioned earlier, and moving the order board will negatively impact Miguel's business operations. The next two discussion items have nothing to do with Miguel's Jr., but you wanted some additional information on them. At the previous meeting, you asked for a copy of approved landscape plans along Sumner, and that was provided in the staff report, and shown here is the landscaping in place along Sumner Avenue for the Eastville Marketplace. Miguel's Jr. will be adding additional landscaping on their site as shown earlier on their respective And you also had concerns about crosswalk visibility throughout the retail center. Staff had been working with Evergreen Development to add crosswalk markings and improve visibility of pedestrian connections. Staff recommends approval of the major development review and deletion of condition number six in the major development review to relocate the menu board, and to approve amendment to CUP 15-0958B, which is to bring back the project in a year to see if anything needs to be changed in the drive-through operation, and the other two operational conditions, which is to provide marked parking spaces for order pickup and to have employees take orders at the drive-through lane on a tablet. There are three options available for the commission. They are to approve the major development review without amending the conditional use permit, to approve the major development review and approve an amendment to the conditional use permit with additional conditions or changes, or to deny the project. Staff is prepared to answer any questions from the commission. The applicant and a representative from Evergreen is here as well if you have questions for them.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up public comments. Did we have anyone from the audience that would like to speak on for or against this?
Yes. Bobby Foster? Barry Foster, I'm sorry.
My name's Barry Foster, I'm the managing director of the Eastville Restaurant by HBL. We're a development consulting company that works in about 40 cities in Southern California and half the state, and we're doing a lot of the needs of them. I've also been fortunate over the years to have been involved in at least six of the projects that have been involved with Miguel's Jr. And like, I moved here about 27 years ago, made fans of the restaurant, who lives in Grand Terrace, and, you know, it's hot here and his family have taken the process over the years, a little bit of fun, you know, through the concept. It's making it really work for them. So today, the restaurants are, they're all looking for things to be done quickly and fast, and our drivers are very, very important, and White, she, she lets me develop at least twice a week, she's actually living in Ontario, one of those kinds of places, and we've never been in a Miguel's restaurant, now, to drive through, and I am not, so it's very important to her, and it's very important to their operation, and the way they work, you know. And they've taken our concept, and their food has been fantastic, but they're really a designer of restaurants that fits the needs of their customer, and also fit into the shopping size, and the kind of environment that they go in. Their drivers are also very important, you know. They, over the years, Roger and his team, they've gone ahead and they've taken the direction of the concept, and they're willing to refine it to make it work. Oftentimes, the stacking that they provide, they see what's in the department, they've done that because they have practiced with the year, it's annoying, but it really works for their customer base, and make sure that their driver staff and team are able to put that, and it's a good customer design. They don't want to have any drive-through problems, and so, the most important stacking for them is after the order. They need to have time to study how to stay after that order, very, really, they make it fresh, and they're not like the bottles, they don't go up and just squeeze your everything in the window, they don't have to go over the parking lot, they need that time to go in and prepare that food for everyone, so that's the most important thing. The condition that the city had earlier, a booth being on stage, that's really sort of good, and they have that, so that's the most important stacking. They've gone ahead and they've done a stacking and food study, they've provided a plan commission with cities with more information, really had documented their busy time, it's really our first big project. And they've developed more and more stores, and they probably have key stores here, sometimes pre-owned stores here, and they look at different locations, they're looking at some locations that are on three ways, and they're looking for big businesses. They also look at location, more of a neighborhood shopping, it's more of an initial location, more of a residential area, doesn't have a big strong daytime population, doesn't have a big strong nighttime population, it's very different than the one in Ontario, okay, that has a very strong daytime population, and like right now, they might not have any type of different type of location. They're also looking at this, not only being their only location at Eastville, they're looking at other locations, more three-way locations, they're looking at actually having two restaurants that serve the Eastville, a lot of them. You know, again, I think when you started talking about coming to Eastville, I thought it was a great fit, and the shopping center, I think it's a great fit for Miguel's, and I think it'll be a long winter in the community, they'd like to do this location and another location there. They're a growing company, I think that this marketplace will be a win-win for them, and I think that they've got a bottom, and everything that's required to come to the community, the stacking, they've added new enhancements to the elevations, trying to meet their needs and requirements, this development will require, so I think that is a very important area.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time, we'll close public comments, and questions from the commission? You ready to roll? Commissioner Patel, you have any questions?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't plan on a two-hour drive to get here. My, the only thing is, the condition is the same one year, Mr. Norris, that we've done with other drive-through. We did this with Panera, we had a one-year review-
We did, and we did it with Bank of America as well.
Okay, so-
Same condition.
Same, same thing. The only other condition that we've added was to have the two reserved parking spots?
Yeah, we added that basic operational condition. The commission wanted to have more specificity about how they would address those potential overflow situations, so we added that condition in.
I have comments, but those are my only questions.
Questions, Commissioner Lee?
Since I had the comment on the outdoor seating, again, thanks for providing me with the site plan of the whole development. I think that was very helpful, because I was able to see the outdoor seating area on other location throughout the development, so I think with that, I'm assuming those are publicly accessible outdoors.
Well, we have someone from Evergreen here, maybe they can explain in a little more detail. I was on the phone with them yesterday, and those other seating areas are gonna be reserved for other restaurants, so you might want to talk with them about how accessible they might be to the public.
Do I need to open up public comments again? I'll open them back up if the representative from Evergreen would like to speak.
Good evening.
I don't think it's working.
It is working.
Is it? You gotta be close?
There we go, okay. Close to there. Maybe my commissioners, my assistant, Chris Berg, my partner, they're a real company, and they've worked with us in Roseland for about four years. I'm excited they'll be right as put down where almost fully leased, and they have a great model project. In regards to your question, Commissioner Lee, the other patio areas are exclusively those tents, and this raises a lot of issues around operational issues, as I pointed out in the staff report. One of the, one of the restaurants face your alcohol, if that's the case, then you're likely certain elements of the patio that also prohibited non-paint prints to use the space. So the book and patio seats are exclusive to crazy ground, which is closest to the oaks, and then on the corridor end with the exclusive balcony.
Any other questions for the applicant? Or the property? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, comments? Karen, comments?
Unfortunately, I was not here for the last session, and had I been here, I would've approved it since we had the same requirements as other ones. My concern as a government is that we do not start getting involved in private sector issues. If Miguel's has such a demand, that's a fabulous problem for them to figure out. I don't think that's for government's position to figure that out. We need to be consistent with what we did for B of A, for what we did with Panera, and it looks like we have included that for that one-year review, so I'm very satisfied with the conditions and knowing the excellence of our plan department of what they've gone through. So what I've analyzed, I, I think our conditions are consistent with other public businesses, or I should say, private businesses within the community, and that's all.
Comments?
Nope, no comments.
Yes, I have a few comments. I appreciate the revised-
Um, I appreciate the revised, uh, rear elevation. Uh, it looks nice. Um, it's a big improvement from the previous one. I like that. Um, also, uh, I think our concern on the commission for the queuing on the drive-through is, uh, the fact that, and it's not for them, for an in-house, uh, trying to handle their in-house problems, but the fact that if it overflows into the parking lot, that, uh, it could cause traffic to, to other, um, tenants and, uh, customers and, and that's what we're trying to avoid. I know that nothing's going to be perfect and there's going to be those times, but we could do our best and that's all we could do. But other than that, I think it looks good and, uh, I appreciate the effort they put on improving the rear elevation.
Good. Then let's put this to vote, please. Any motion?
I make a motion that we approved, sorry, I don't have my cheater glasses, um, project seventeen dash two zero zero two-two, based on staff recommendation of, um, the conditional use permit with a one-year as well as additional conditions regarding to management of the drive-through.
And may I add the deletion of the condition six, right? Is that with that?
Yeah, if we could just have maker of the motion confirm.
And the deletion of.
So the addition of the two conditions and the deletion of condition six on the development plan review.
And the deletion of condition six.
Very good.
Give a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Chair Charleston?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, we'll move on to the last agenda on the item, which I think most of the people that are in the audience are here to hear about or to see what happens. And that would be the eighty-five-foot-high wireless telecommunications tower disguised as a water tank at the northeast corner of the city of Eastvale Fire Station number thirty-one. Staff presentation?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, again, as you mentioned, this is also a continued item from your last meeting. So once again, we're going to focus on those questions that the commission asked us to look into a little bit more. And Yvette Noir is the planner for the project, and she will give that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Norris, sir. Good evening, Chair Charleston, members of the commission. The project I'm presenting tonight is the minor development review for fire station number thirty, the cell tower at fire station number thirty-one on Chandler Street. The applicant, Verizon Wireless, has applied for a minor development review for the installation of a new eighty-five-foot-high wireless telecommunications tower designed to look like a water tank. As you recall, at the October eighteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting, the planning commission requested information and analysis on a few items, including relocating the cell tower somewhere else on the project site, providing better and easier-to-read map, coverage maps, and increasing the height of the tower. In addition, the applicant was requested to conduct community outreach prior to tonight's meeting. There were a few alternative areas on the subject site that were considered for the cell tower. These areas are shown in this slide in orange, blue, and purple squares. The orange square adjacent to Selby Avenue wouldn't work because the cell tower enclosure would block the driveway onto Selby Avenue. The blue square east of the basin wouldn't work either because access must be maintained around the water quality basin, and there wouldn't be enough space for vehicle access if the cell tower were to be located there. The yellow area north of the fire station also wouldn't work because that area between the detention basin and the fire station has been reserved for the future EOC building, which hasn't been designed yet, so it is not possible to determine whether any potential site for the tower would conflict with this future city facility. As shown in this slide, moving the tower to another location would not work because there's not enough room to accommodate the EOC building and parking, the cell tower, and the detention basin in a configuration that would leave enough room for vehicles to pass through. Another reason it's not necessary to move the tower is because it meets all the required setbacks. Based on the tower height, the minimum setback is a hundred and six feet from the nearest habitable dwelling unit. Uh, the Riverside County Flood Control Basin-owned channel is shown here, and that's eighty-six feet wide. And then going clockwise, starting from the home on the west, the measurements are from the proposed tower site, a hundred and eighty-six, or a hundred and eighty-seven point six feet. Uh, the home directly north of the proposed project site is a hundred and thirty point four feet. Second home in is a hundred and thirty-eight point two feet. The third home in is one hundred and sixty-two point nine feet, and the fourth home in is a hundred and ninety-five point one feet. This sign just shows that the Riverside County Flood Control owns the channel north of the fire station. The second item requested was better coverage maps, and the applicant has provided better coverage maps to help illustrate the change in coverage from what is expected to what coverage objectives would look like with the proposed project. On these maps, red is shown as best coverage and blue is the worst. This map shows existing coverage without the cell tower. Here's what the anticipated coverage would look like once the tower, tower is operational. In addition to the coverage maps, the applicant has also provided documents showing how much coverage each sector of the cell tower is anticipated to provide and with, and the area with drop calls, which were provided as an attachment to the staff report. The applicant can explain the maps in the document to the commission tonight and can also explain existing and anticipated coverages in more detail. The last item you had asked us to look at was increasing the height of the tower. There are several reasons why increasing the height of the tower isn't necessary. The tower's height does not need to be increased for purpose of improved coverage because the tower's proposed height is adequate for operation and to provide adequate coverage. Increasing the height of the tower would require making the base of the tower wider, potentially increasing the size of the lease area and possibly causing conflicts with access to the site and to the detention basin. Making the tower taller would make it visible from a larger area. The tower is designed to be attractive, but staff still recommends limiting its visibility as much as possible since one of the findings requires that the facility be designed and sited so that it is minimally visually intrusive. Also, increasing the height of the tower by twenty feet would move the tower about ten feet further away, which isn't necessary because, as discussed, the facility as proposed already exceeds the required setback from the residential areas. This slide shows a new photo sim provided by the applicant showing the fire station looking northeast on Chandler Avenue. The applicant had a community outreach event this past Monday and can provide additional details to the commission on the results of the event. In response to concern from city staff about the view of the equipment area from inside the subject site, planning reviewed the appearance of the proposed enclosure of the lease area, which is currently proposed as a tubular steel fence with landscaping. Taking into account the future use of the northern portion of the fire station site, which includes the EOC building, staff recommends that the facility be enclosed with a solid masonry wall consistent with other cell tower that were, that cell towers that were approved recently. So staff recommends adding an additional condition of approval to ensure that the facility will not become an eyesore for future users of the fire station or the EOC. Continued public hearings do not require renoticing, but as a courtesy, reminders were mailed to property owners within a six-hundred-foot radius of the subject site for tonight's meeting because staff wanted to ensure that nearby property owners were aware of tonight's meeting. Also, the applicant reminded people attending the community meeting on Monday about tonight's continued hearing. Staff recommends approval of the minor development review for the new eighty-five-foot-high wireless telecommunications tower with ancillary equipment located at fire station number thirty-one, subject to conditions of approval and with changes recommended by staff to put up the masonry wall. Planning commission options for tonight are to approve the project with additional changes and/or conditions, continue the public hearing, and direct the applicant to make revisions, or deny the project. And just a reminder that if you choose to deny the project, it will have to be based on which findings the project doesn't satisfy. A final note, there was a request to remove the weeds from around the detention basin. This slide, uh, shows a picture that was taken today that shows that the weeds have been removed, and this is another picture. Staff is prepared to answer any questions from the commission, and the applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, one more thing. Uh, the city manager asked me to just clarify, when we're talking about the future EOC, that, that's an idea that we're trying to reserve the space for, but it's not approved or final in any way. But we are, in the event that goes there, we just want to, that's why Ms. Noir was talking about wanting to keep that yellow area clear of anything else.
Okay. Thank you. What's that? Possibly not. Karen asked, could you explain what EOC stands for?
I'm sorry. I owe myself a dollar for using an acronym that I didn't explain. Uh, EOC is Emergency Operations Center. So that would be a building where, in the event of fire, flood, any other kind of disaster, uh, city staff, police, fire, and so on would gather to manage that operation.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing. Who is our first speaker?
Our first speaker was the applicant, Randy Newton.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can I have a quick presentation?
Thank you.
Let me be a little more training. So when we received a structure area from Verizon Wireless, this is kind of what it looks like, they tell us we need a site in this location. So for this specific area, this is what they sent us. There's four key elements considered in the selection process. It needs to be feasible, meaning the property must be to have an owner who has leased the space to Verizon. It must be zonable, so that castle, the zoning environment has to be constructable, and it has to meet the needs of the RF for coverage. Uh, the first thing we always look for when seeking a candidate for a new site, a co-location opportunity, and then we're none near this location. Uh, no option for co-location, we go find a facility where we can build based on those four key elements. Uh, the properties located in this area are commercially zoned. The majority of them also house residential structures, not an unfavorable use. Not that we want to put a tower on a property with residents on it, but if there's something else available, we'd rather do that. Shows that the properties from the left side here have, uh, they would be setbacks, and they also have residential structures. Same to the property on the right there, so I'd like this to be a rotation property. There are three main drivers that prompt the need for a new facility, coverage, capacity, and drop and block calls. And as you can see from the maps here, the coverage is in terrible mid-range existing. Obviously, after the site, it'd be good, excellent. The bigger problem with this area were the drop calls. So this was data taken over a forty-eight-hour period, and these were drop calls from existing site, Selby, I believe that's the part. And so all of these blue squares are drop calls within that forty-eight-hour period. That red circle there is the approximate location of this new proposed site. This is the same data that is for user usage during a twenty-four-hour period, which is around that same time we just, we're gonna have to go. Those are all of the users. And again, the red circle is where that new Selby would be located. And then again, just the proposed, you've seen these. Parks and nature residents is showing three new setbacks. Uh, there was a comment, uh, last week, last month, I'm sorry, about the noise of the facility. This is the generator that would be supposed, the fifty-foot generator. It's sound attenuated, sixty-five PVA has seven meters to go up, twenty-three feet. And that's just standing next to it. This is obviously going to be surrounded by a block wall and also be a hundred and thirty feet of residents. Sorry, and then there's, uh, there's no check here, and they know someone last month that mentioned that they've been near a facility that's running loud all the time, and that was mostly the only facility that had the door to get a shelter and those are probably the check, and it's running, this does not have a control outdoor. And so the generators are energy power company and not run twenty-four hours, they'll become the company for maintenance and then in emergency. There was also some discussion about property values. This is a group metrics study that was done twenty-fifteen, uh, revealed that U.S. adults care more about self-employment than, than buying a home. It's pretty much by features, eighteen to thirty-four, thirty-five to forty-four, forty-five to fifty-four. A survey of two thousand Americans, seventy percent rate for the food issue as important compared to seventy-six percent for low-income services. Same proportion of many hospitals are essential. Uh, so there was another study done in twenty-twelve, this was, uh, study using our sixteen residents in Palo Alto, but it was the East, there's a, uh, this survey, but this price is the sale price and the distance from the foyer of the facility. As you can see here, these were, uh, they've, none of them were sold for ninety-nine percent. Some of them are one percent below this price, whether it was right next to the facility a quarter mile away or half mile away. Um, there are benefits to the community, having a facility that increases nine-one-one coverage. The majority of, seventy-six percent of nine-one-one calls now originate from wireless devices. A lot of safety, good personal safety and security, uh, capability of local businesses, the better service of customers, opportunity for city or county to factor businesses for greater economic development, and again, the nine-one-one services, very important. I wanted to make a correction, but the community meetings that we held, um, there were suppliers that said that, that was due, all the same addresses required for the building to this meeting, and then we're creating attendance, one was in favor of the facility. The staff report. I don't know if I have, have any questions? I'm sorry, I also have a representation.
No, it's okay. Uh, any question for the applicant at this time? Go for it.
Uh, just for clarification, how much I can be in discussion? Um, my husband is a Verizon Telematics employee now, they just merged, um, not Verizon Wireless. So, um, how much I can participate in comment, discussion, or?
So are you saying that the Telematics business is separate from the Verizon Wireless business?
Yeah, it, it does logistic fleet, it's the software, it's, it's the gadget, sorry. I'm a numbers girl. It's the gadget that goes in industrial fleet as they track, kind of like the retail, you know, how fast and the zoning and for trucks and things like that.
So nothing to do with the wireless?
Pardon?
So he has nothing to do with the wireless?
No, he's a IT project, um, manager.
I think you'd be fine to participate in this.
Okay.
Okay, questions for the applicant?
Some, some kind of curious, could you kind of summarize, um, how the meeting went on Monday with individuals?
Yeah, we, we started the meeting at five, and there were two residents, um, that showed up at that time, and we discussed mostly health issues and RF, um, pretty much, a little bit of property value. And we just tried to explain the information that we had, those residents, and then another resident there. another resident there.
Questions?
I have one. On these dropped calls, there's no key. Does each blue square represent one, it represents 500?
Well, each blue square is one, unless they're obviously together to make right angle, because you keep them right next to each other. Yes, each square is a dropped call within that 48-hour period.
Is one dropped call?
Any questions?
I have no questions.
I have no questions, thank you. At this time, who's our next speaker? Thank you.
Raj with Hammett &amp; Edison, Inc.
Good evening. My mission is mainly to project value, discuss property values, and the state of California. Our job as engineers is to evaluate sites that need for radio frequency exposure or RF exposure compliance with the FCC standard. We completed that evaluation for this site, and I will comply with the FCC limits. We maximum calculated RF exposure level anywhere around, where I said, total elevation of a nearby home to building is 1.7% of the FCC limit. What that means is that the levels are about 60 times below the FCC limit. There's two main reasons why the levels are so low. First is that the antenna is directional. The energy that comes out of the antenna is not equal to the directions. It's directed straight out towards the horizon, 80 feet above ground, above where most of the people are. The second reason is that the energy from the antenna falls off in the square distance. What that means is that if you go 20 kph away from the antenna, the energy will fall by 4 per square meter. If you go 10 kph away from the antenna, the energy will fall by square meters, 100 kph. And I will answer any questions we have, or if it's really large.
Thank you.
Donald Robinson.
Good evening. My mission is mainly to project value, discuss property values, and the keeping it looking beautiful. If we're going to have something literally in our backyard, we want it to look good. You know, according to Verizon, in the city council's charter, it's listed under maintenance. How do we ensure that this doesn't look bad? Do we call the city council when it needs to be watched? Do we call the city council when it needs to be painted? How is the way that the year is covered under maintenance? If you may answer that briefly.
We will. When we're all said and done, Mr. Norris will answer some of the questions. We'll wait and see if anybody else has a question similar.
And then as far as the property value, I was there Monday night, and I don't understand the case with the actual values and percentages, so I'd like to copy that. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That was the last speaker card that I received. That was the last speaker card?
That was it? Mr. Norris, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, with regard to maintenance, reminder to the audience that this is city-owned property, so this will be leased to Verizon. And part of the terms of the lease that we negotiated with them requires them to keep the facility maintained. So first of all, we have a lease to hold over their heads that requires them to do that. Second of all, it's going to have our logo on it, so that's our name up there, and we're going to want to keep that looking nice. So it will definitely be well-kept, and if it isn't, then we'll have the ability to go to Verizon and compel them to maintain it.
So do we contact you when there's an issue, or the city, or who do we contact?
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
I don't know relative to power on the other major street, and it looks pretty bad. I would hate to have that in my backyard.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's not our facility, it's on private property, and we don't have that kind of ability to control that. So yeah, if you have an issue with it, by all means, you can contact me, you can use the city-sourced app to submit that as a code enforcement complaint, so, any number of ways, but I don't expect we'll have issues, but if there are, we'll make sure it gets cleaned up.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public comment section. And any questions for staff at this time? Karen?
No.
Josh?
No questions.
No questions.
Any comments at this time? Karen?
No.
Comments, Josh?
I guess comment is more positive towards the applicant than anything else. I think what we asked for last time, I think they've more than satisfied, I think, in terms of providing more information, especially including some of the studies, you know, even though there were large documents. I did read the executive summary. So, you know, it's fun to thank everybody for providing all the information that we requested, as well as applicant outreach to the community. So I'm sure it wasn't, you know, the folks don't feel that it was an adequate outreach, but I think at least they attempted. So, yeah, so in that case, I think it was a good move.
Thank you. Commissioner Blaugh?
I'd like to echo Mr. Lee's comment, and our choice for a water tank, I think, is appropriate with the lack of any large trees in that area, so I think that's the best choice we had to conceal that, those antennas. So, but I agree with the residents, we need to keep on top of it so they make sure it looks nice continually and not let it go down. Another comment, I'd like to have a copy of that Federal Communications Commission report that we gave on the, our report, our commissioner's report, Local Government Officials' Guide to Transmission. If I can get a hard copy of that, so I could have it in my file, so the next time something like this comes up, I'll have that to lean on. So if you could put that in my box, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I really don't have any questions either, I just have a couple small comments. One is, we received tonight from concerned Eastville residents, we have 25 signatures that ask us to not approve this. And this is not our first cell tower. And each time they come forward to us, it's a difficult decision to make, because the people that are most impacted by it are the people that live closest to it. Everybody that's farther out, they all want the tower. Everybody that lives close to it, they don't want the tower. A few do, but most, a lot of them do not. So we have to deal with that. The only people that come to the meetings are the ones that do not want it most of the time. So we have to look at the impact on what's best for the city as a whole. So not that we don't take this into consideration, because 25 people coming forward saying that they don't want the cell tower is a big thing to me. If you're willing to sign that and then come, that means it's important to you. So I will ask one last question to staff. Have we exhausted all energies of where else this tower could actually go? Is there anything else we could possibly do? And if we were to deny this, do we have any grounds of any findings that we could deny it under any way?
Well, sir, if you wanted to deny it, as Ms. Noir mentioned, you'd have to be able to say that you could not make all the findings for approval. So if you did want to go that way, we'd kind of look to you about which findings you don't think you could make, and then bring you back a resolution for denial. We wrote it in the affirmative, because our recommendation is that you can make the findings. And as far as other locations, you have an RF, radio frequency expert here who can maybe explain better what, where they were looking, and where else it could go, in terms of how far it might be able to shift onto some other properties.
Well, I think he's done a nice job, you know, answering where it's going, and that it's okay to be there. My question is, is that if we consider denying it before we put it to vote, I don't see any findings that jump out at me saying why we can deny this. That's the problem I have with this. So I want to make sure that if somebody puts a vote like that up, how do we discuss and determine, you know, what finding it doesn't approve or meet the requirements of, before we do something that is not within our realm of the way we should be looking at it? That's my biggest concern. So nothing jumps out at me, so at this time, I believe we're ready to put this to vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Out of curiosity, what are the reasons for denial on that petition? Do you have it in a nutshell?
The findings?
For the, on that petition, what were they saying? Why do they want us to deny it? What were their reasons? Did we, somebody read that? Can you give us a nutshell version of their...
Do you have a copy of it, or is this the only copy? Did you give them both to me?
Yes.
Okay, so in a nutshell, aesthetics was number one, adequate phone service was number two, devaluation of real estate was number three, and then the rest of it was mostly opinionated. Aesthetics. So aesthetics, residents have adequate cell service and devaluation of property.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I think it's, we need to put this to vote, please. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 85-foot cellphone tower, the minor development review, to approve the minor development review of the 85-foot wireless communication tower, because that's what this is, it's a development review, and that's what we're doing. So I make a motion for approval.
I'll second it. No, Mr. Lee, go ahead.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can we confirm with the maker that that includes adding the new condition about the wall around the...
With, with the additional conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Obleah?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Chair Charleston?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you for coming out. Okay, at this time, do we have any presentations tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
City staff report?
Just a couple brief items. You have our monthly report in your package, so as always, if you have any questions about anything on there, give us a call. The other thing of note is, we received direction from the council last Wednesday to bring the LEO master plan forward for approval. So that will be happening on December 13th, and this commission's recommendation to approve that will be forwarded to them, and invite you all to come to that meeting and hear that. It's been a while, but we're looking forward to finally bringing that project to a conclusion.
Thank you. That's good news.
Chairman Charleston and Commissioners, I do have a few updates for you. There are a couple of items that were provided to the community at last night's town hall meeting. So some of the things that you'll start seeing around the community is that the roadway adoption signs are going up for the various frontage areas throughout the community that have been adopted by the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, or various community organizations. That was an initiative from Mayor Tissari. So those signs will be going up, they should be completely installed by Friday. For residents that wish to engage in the wonderful volunteer opportunity, there are still segments of roadway that are available for adoption, just please contact City Hall or visit the city's website where you can provide, you can find additional information. We also have several military banners that will be taken down, they'll be rotated out because their term has been completed or they are no longer on active duty. Those will be retired at the December 13th meeting, and new military banners will be installed the week of November 27th. For members of the public that have active-duty military personnel, they can visit the city's website and learn about how to get a military banner for their loved one. There's also a crime statistics page that has been created on the city's website, this is new. This is something that was requested by Commissioner, excuse me, Councilmember Rigby, that has gone out through e-notification, so for any members of the public who are not subscribers of e-notification, we really encourage you to do so, because a lot of this information is sent out via email and social media. So encourage you to visit the crime stats page. The December 13th city council meeting is the last city council meeting for 2017. There's only one meeting for the month of December because of the holidays. During this last meeting of the year, city council typically picks a new, a new mayor, an mayor pro tem. Eastville, as you know, our council, our mayor is not a separately elected position, it is a position that is chosen amongst the council members themselves. So we will be swearing in a new mayor and a mayor pro tem at the December 13th meeting. At that same meeting, they will be confirming their commission appointments. We encourage everyone to attend that meeting and enjoy some refreshments. Prior to the meeting, we're hoping to have kind of a meet and greet for about half an hour, so we hope to see you at 6 o'clock for meet and greet, and the meeting will start at 6:30. Recruitment for a new city attorney ends tomorrow, so we're still accepting requests for proposal up until tomorrow evening. We will also be opening recruitment for an assistant city manager sometime in the next several, probably within the next two to three weeks. Due to the holidays, that probably will not go out until early December, I'm guessing, but an executive recruiter has been hired to fulfill that recruitment process. Some things that will be coming to the commission and then going on to the council in coming weeks is a overhaul of the neighborhood preservation overlay, also an overhaul of the Eastville Municipal Code. These are to-dos. So once we have a new city attorney onboard, not that we love Suzanne, but she's our interim, these are projects that are on the to-do list for the planning commission and city staff as well as the incoming city attorneys. So neighborhood preservation overlay, municipal code, and zoning code. Let's see, also pleased to share with the commission that Eastville median home sales price has gone up once again. We are still number two in Riverside County for highest median home sales price. It is currently 557,750. That's a 1.83% increase over last quarter, and I'm pleased to share that we have been on a continual increasing trajectory over the last several years. We are behind, number two behind, oh, I keep, is it La Quinta? La Quinta?
Quinta, I think.
And we will also be opening recruitment for a code enforcement officer. Our code enforcement officer, Andy Shuck, is a contract position, and his contract ends at the end of December. So we will be opening recruitment for a position to replace him. Okay? I'd be happy to answer your, answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions for the city manager? That was a mouthful, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Michelle, yesterday, one of the topics that was brought up was safe routes to school.
Yes, sir.
So I think with ATP cycle four coming up, I think we have opportunity to get more funding for programs on safe routes to school. So I think the main contact at the county is the Public Health Department, so let's try to see if we can contact them and see if we can... contact them, um, and see if we can get some, uh, funding for Safe Road to School programs. Not, not the engineering part, but the program.
Right, I'll, I'll let Craig speak about that, because we did have city staff attend that meeting today. Um, I believe that was Craig, actually.
Right.
So, we'll be pursuing that.
Yeah, questions, all right, just, just jump in. Yeah, I attended the Riverside County Active Transportation Network, uh, meeting today, and the big discussion was the active transportation program, uh, funding that's going up to cycle four, there, I believe there's another hundred, uh, million dollars that's available due to the Senate bill, uh, one that was recently approved. Um, my, my direct question was to them was if they had changed the, the disadvantaged communities, it, being able to get an extra ten points out of the hundred points, and, uh, they really have not changed anything in that regards. They have broken, uh, the fund into some kind of different categories, I think there's in, uh, some different augmentation, uh, categories they've broken it into. I also asked a direct question about last, uh, the last cycle, what was the percentage of disadvantaged communities that, as far as receiving ATP funds? The answer was one hundred percent, and since we don't really fit that disadvantaged communities, uh, the, the way they define it, it makes it very difficult for us to receive funding. Uh, we were looking at the gap between us and then, and where the funding cutoff was, and it was a monstrous number. I can't remember, it was a billion dollars or two, but it was, it was a big number. There's a lot of communities between, so, that, that's a concern, and I, I know there's been a lot of lobbying, trying to make changes, and that really hasn't happened. Um, might mention also that we, um, we just, uh, signed the paperwork for our, our grant, it's, it was the SB eight-twenty-one, uh, pedestrian and bicycle safety enhancements grant, uh, the grant's for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this grant was, is for, um, our sixty-fifth street, uh, it'll be a road diet, bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements, uh, basically it goes from Hamner to Archibald, which is two miles. Uh, we'll be reconfiguring the striping on the roadway and to provide, uh, bicycle and pedestrian amenities, and, uh, return parking next to the Harada Park and the dog park, next to the dog park, and we upgrading crosswalks and so forth. That'll be a process as we go through it, um, and we'll be coming to the public safety and to the planning commission for review, and that, that'll be occurring probably late spring, early summer. And, uh, that's my report, glad to answer any questions.
So, one, one thing that I, I think we can do, um, to, um, kind of not, not beat the DAX requirement, but, um, the reason why I bring up Public Health is we can actually, county can combine all the programs together, and then if you have, like, Rupa Valley, you have other cities that does have, uh, DAX, uh, we can kind of go in as a group, and hopefully, as a county, if we get the program funded, we'll be able to fund our, some of our programs, so that's something to think about.
That's, that's a good thought. Actually, I, RCTC, um, uh, they, they said they would help structure the grant and see if there's some ways we could obtain some sort of funding. Um, there's also, um, what was I gonna say? There, there's some different things that we can do, that we'll look into, um, and we'll work the angles. WRCOG has professional grant writers, they, they have, um, how am I trying to name, um, Brian, Brian Jones with, uh, Alta Planning, he's gonna help with grant writing, I think we'll get on their list very early. Uh, we may wanna look at, uh, bringing Alta Planning or somebody in to, you know, help with some of those concepts, to help structure those and help present them, you know, those to the public.
Any other questions? Okay, just a reminder, our next, uh, planning commission meeting is December twentieth. Hopefully, it'll be a short one, it'll be really close to Christmas, and we're gonna be probably all very, very busy, but if you have something good for us, bring it on.
While we have you all here, are you all gonna be here on the twentieth?
I will be.
Are we gonna be when?
Are you gonna be around on December twentieth, or out of town, or...
No, I'll be here.
Were you planning to buy us all tickets to Hawaii or something? Is that what you wanted to know?
No, we'd rather be here in Eastville than Hawaii, why do you wanna go there?
That's right.
I'm sorry, I wanna go to Chicago.
Okay, meeting adjourned.